Just being respectful of Allison's time, I thought maybe we start with, sorry, are we on?
Yeah, we're all good.
Cool. Um, so yeah, to Allison, we had some questions last time we met, just on, um, see a lot of the what's up, interest in meeting, what they're hearing.
Oh, yes, sorry. Uh, s- thank you. School board finance committee meeting on May first. Um, so the agenda for tonight is, I'm just gonna steal this from you, Michelle. Um, so this is a continuation of a meeting we had last week where we went through the, I put it to my budget. Um, and we had some questions, um, following that meeting on some of the line items that we just wanted to leave a bit more clarity. More of an answer on the inclusion specialist role, which didn't make it into the investments. Um, and we just want to understand your perspectives or for the impact of not having that would be or or adding it in. And then any updates that you may have on, uh, numbers coming in this year. So, start there.
Sure. I, I can let you know, we had, uh, half of our, conducted half of our, uh, IEP meetings for incoming CDS case students. So fifteen, uh, meetings to go. So I don't have, um, any adjustment in, um, the projections. Um, other than I think our number will not be thirty five students that are coming in. We have, um, t- two that have moved, three that are deferring out a year because of how their age falls between July one and October fifteenth. Um, but, uh, none of those students, um, are the high impact students. But as I said, we still have fifteen meetings, um, left. So I don't see a change in the need for a special education teacher, potentially a reduction of one ed tech. There's a request of nine. But again, uh, have a half a meeting left to go. Um, in regards to the clerical position, you know, I've been, um, the staff, we've been piloting a model at Whitworth, uh, using a, a current, um, clerical, uh, member and paying them for up to five additional hours a week. Um, that, uh, is not working as well as I thought it would because, uh, just the nature of the job this person has. It doesn't allow them the flexibility to do scheduling, conversation, email communication naturally throughout the day like it does in our model at the high school. Um, uh, that, uh, position is requiring more than five hours, which puts us into si- a situation of paying overtime. And that's not cost effective for us. So, um, so though I was very hopeful that we would find a position that's naturally at the phase level because there's so much of the learning curve. You know, and the people and the play, you know, all of that. I'm not sure that's actually gonna happen. Uh, I think if we get a situation that we really have to look critically at numbers, that can, um, ideally there's full-time work, but that can probably, um, be cut and transition that position in and start with three days a week. Um, for next year, uh, which would basically give, uh, seven hours for each of the three phases. The middle school mo- uh, high school model is working and that is in place and will continue on. Um, then, uh, the last update, the main care, um, that is still very much a, a moving target. But we have received some back billing from an agency for a family whose main care has ceased. And, um, that has not been, uh, the parent here has not done what they've needed to do. Uh, and support has been offered, so I'm not sure that situation is gonna change. Um, so the impact, um, of that is actually a little bit more than the tuition is. So it's about five thousand dollars a month, uh, addition to the tuition that we're already paying. That's, uh, so you'll see there's a discussion about accounting for that in the budget. That being said, um, a student who could become main care eligible and they would back bill and, and that could disappear. But it, it could not. Um, and we have, uh, two other situations that, um, also potentially, uh, the parent is, uh, remitting consent. Uh, so there's many scenarios and that's a complexity of main care. It is only billable per parent consent. And we have several different scenarios. We, we do pay related services, uh, main care billing services for a student. Because main, uh, private insurance is capped before main care and it was impacting this family's annual allowance for insurance for their child. So they are only having part of main care billed and we're paying part of it. So there's one scenario. Another scenario is a parent just doesn't wanna do the application, so can't. Another scenario is a parent declines, um, people to, uh, bill main care for their child. So we have all three scenarios going on right now. Um.
Can you remind me, I think I asked you before, but where, what's the situation where someone would decline main care billing?
Uh, v- any, a variety of reason. Um, it, it might impact my private insurance for my child, you know, my cap. It, uh, there are certain requirements to main care billing. A family may not wanna meet those requirements. Or the parent, um, is feeling that the school should pay the bill.
Are there any differences to the services that get provided whether or not it's paid for by main care or?
That would, that would not be allowable, you know? The service is a service.
Yeah. Yep.
There i- there is a lot of ongoing debate about main care, the CDS model bills. Um, a lot of their budget is main care based. Public schools, we used to bill, um, a bit ago for related services. And there was, uh, an audit done and three school districts were, um, received significant, um, bills they had to pay back.
They had to give back the money they had received, um, for these, your program?
Yes, because, you know, main care is a medical model, school is an educational model. And they're trying to get the two to communicate, um, and that's a bit fuzzy. And so almost, a lot of districts have stopped billing because until there can be that clarity and that assurance. Um, we, uh, even had, uh, the online system we use for our data, um, MSB. Uh, we paid them to maintain. There's a lot of annual trainings and write-offs and service plans. There's a lot of requirements that go with main care billing and, uh, we were paying for support with compliance on that. And, and it was costing more than really what we were bringing in. So we stopped that. Then we did it a while for ourselves. And then these three districts had significant financial compensation that, and so a lot of us pulled out of doing any main care billing. And now there's a push by the state for it, for us to do main care billing, but there's no guarantee. So I think it makes us very vulnerable. Um.
So the rest, just to put it in limited terms, is that you put in a bill of main care and say, we provided these services to this student. Main care sends us the money and then later on they do a review of your books and they say, oh, well, that wasn't really a covered service. Or that person wasn't qualified to provide that service 'cause they didn't have this certification or that certification. So.
And eligibility is done on a monthly basis, so, uh.
Student eligibility as well.
Student eligibility has changed monthly.
Changes monthly.
So it's, uh, always a moving target, even if you're looking at it for revenue.
So we've moved away from having Medicare revenue, main, uh, main care revenue in our budget back in the olden days.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, when I first started building budgets, we actually had a revenue line in our general fund, just like student activity fees or state subsidy. Or, um, you know, those non-tax revenues, that was two hundred thousand dollars a year, sometimes more.
And we had state agency client from there too.
Um, and we, we assumed that we would receive payment for services that we were providing in district. At this point, we've given up on that. And now what we're experiencing is the schools that are the special purpose private schools, we're sending students out to. So right now, the only piece we're talking about is an out-of-district student where that school, private school, might be relying on Medicare income and not being, not billing us for some of the services because they've been getting the money from main care. So if they don't get the money for main care, they're gonna turn around and say, oh, hey, send in school, you're on another path.
That's exactly the situation that we're in. It's with our out-of-district students.
Right. Which is already significant cost. Well, and what we've.
It's not up significantly from last year, but it is a significant cost.
Yeah. What we've got for a proposal, um, based on that, these conversations, is that in this running chart, you'll see when there's a line that says that we need to increase our out-of-district tuition line to be able to accommodate the ability for those additional services. That wouldn't necessarily be just the tuition, um, which is how we calculate really the first reading.
Correct.
Um, so when we were building that line for first reading, we were looking at who were the students who were being served and what are our expectations, um, for the coming year? And what's the tuition rate li- likely to be?
And special education receives a significant grant annually, local entitlement, um, but federal money can't be used to pay, to supplement federal money. So, uh, we can't use any of our local entitlement to offset these potential additional charges that we'll get from main care.
So this sixty thousand dollars is for three students?
It's for one student.
Oh, that's for one student. Uh, the one student who is currently right at this moment in a situation where the sending, or the private school isn't able to bill main care, has just sent us a bill for the past few months and it's a- it's averaging five thousand dollars a month for those additional services. We were already paying tuition for this child, but we weren't paying for all the additional medical services, which, because they were getting money for main care. Um, so our estimate is for this one kid who's currently in this situation, um, if we had to pay five thousand dollars a month for twelve months, that's what that would look like. And typically, these programs are not a ten-month program, they're, they're a year-round program.
They're year-round programs. I think, um, you know, potentially you would look, you could look at our out-of-district line and actually double that.
Mm-hmm.
If in fact this situation happened in all of our out-of-district students. It, it doubles the cost of replacement. So what, what you see is the tuition bill because so far families have been eligible and allowing the other schools to bill.
Yeah. And pretty much every family with a child with a disability is significant enough to require these types of services would be eligible.
Yeah, it's not income dependent.
Right. And, and this, do you see this as back billing? So the sixty thousand in next year's budget would cover this year?
No, uh, this, uh, this budget, I mean, we are already having to absorb because we've received three months of back billing.
And occurring point, I think that's a good thing.
Uh, two weeks ago. Um, and so we're just projecting, wow, so this situation hasn't resolved itself even, and potentially it may not. So.
If it continued at FY twenty, this would be the, the, that FY twenty cost.
Mm-hmm.
And I think what Allison was saying was that if the situation were to change, and you know, this is one of those, you're budgeting for something that's an unknown. Um, like almost everything in Allison's life, if the situation were to change and the private school were now able to bill Medicare again, um, then they could back bill Medicare, main care for services up to the point where the parent was eligible. So we might find some relief in that if the parent then goes out and does what needs to be done to be eligible for main care again. Um, but it's, it's, uh, just another little wrinkle to out-of-district tuition lines, which are notoriously difficult to predict anyway. Because students come, students go, and their, um, need for services, they can't be met in the district. That's a very volatile, um, situation in a, in a, in a good, good year without main care issues.
We, we have low numbers for out-of-district placements because, of course, we wanna keep our kids in their home schools. But, you know, there are obviously situations where if this, a student requires more, you know, two-on-one, two staff, two per student. You know, we're really looking at, is that exceeding the capability in a public school setting? Or if the behavior is so disruptive to the learning environment on a consistent basis. Um, so I think we'll always have some out of districts, just also our space in buildings confines our ability to develop, uh, more program.
Creative programming.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that aside, even the most, some of these students require very specialized programming.
It's just not the appropriate place for them. Yeah. And I think, you know, it's kudos to Allison and her staff that they're able to keep so many of our kids in district and provide adequate, you know, appropriate, well-designed programs for them. And I think you mentioned, Allison, when we were talking about, in the budget workshop, I think it was, that the behavior specialists that we've added have been instrumental in that piece because they're working one-on-one with teachers and, you know, taking a case of a child and figuring out what kinds of accommodations and programming and, uh, tools.
I guess I could segue to the inclusion specialist position with that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, 'cause I, it, it fits. Um, so in keeping students here, in keeping students in, i- in my world, it's called the least restrictive environment. But keeping them in the general education setting for as much as possible, um, that requires, uh, a lot of work. It requires looking at how to modify curriculums, how to implement accommodations, how to potentially look at co- developing co-teaching classrooms, um, how to look at assistive tech, universal design for learning, assistive technology, many complexities. And so, right, for the last few years, we've been contracting out with an inclusion specialist, um, for a couple of students, uh, particular programs to, um, help them be able to access as much special edu- regular education time, being educated with their peers. Um, but it has required looking at the curriculum and compacting it, modifying it, um, adjusting, you know, it down, uh, many levels, but still developing ways that they're working with their peers, contributing an equal member, you know, of the class community. Um, we also use that person to do some school-wide training. I mean, inclusion is a state of mind. It's a belief. It's a thinking. It's not, um, oh, oh, I could get on my, I could, I could.
You should get on your, so long.
Go on a lot about this, but in this vein, I'm talking just special education programming as an inclusion specialist. But to me, the word inclusion is, is so much more. And that so much more part is how we use this consultant to do three school-wide trainings at Whitmore School, uh, in middle school last year. Because inclusion is all about just feeling connected, feeling an equal member, um, focusing on what you're, what do we have in common, not how are we different.
Culturally or something.
So, so that is not, um, anything, I mean, it can have to do with a disability, but can also have, have to do with what you look like or what accent you are, or, you know, so, so many things. So when we're looking at kids with, um, disabilities, whether it be some type of cognitive disability or their attention or their social pragmatic language or their right, their interfering behavior, their executive functioning skills, just being able to concentrate and not disrupt or, or get their thoughts on paper. There's just so many ways inclusion can be supported. But it takes professional development time with general ed and special ed. It takes time for that team to meet on a regular basis and look, okay, what's the next unit coming ahead? How do we need to adapt that? How do we need to, um, uh, create, get, get that story written three grade levels below, but they still have the same content knowledge? Um, how, how do you teach elec- an electricity unit, you know, that's the seventh grade, you know, science, in a way that the student will really get some key learning from that area on? Um, I also think the inclusion specialist, um, we could be critical in doing co-teaching, especially at the high school. You know, our kids are growing through. And, um, I would love to see someone be able to model and teach, uh, staff ways to unpack a curriculum so that they can modify it. S- strategies that can naturally include students of all different learning styles and abilities. And I think co-teaching would be a great way to model that, um, as well as the professional development and meeting with that team. Uh, right now, those meetings usually occur kind of every two weeks. But they're pulling in speech, a speech therapist, an OT therapist, a behavioral specialist, a social worker, the gen ed teacher, the special ed teacher. These are, you know, lots of things, but moving parts. So, um, I think the inclusion specialist would be the leader, would be a trainer, would, um, get some consistent strategies and protocols in place that can be transferred to different classes and content area. Um, our special education teachers don't, and our general education teachers, they don't have really three hours a week to do this curriculum programming that some of our students are taking if, to do this well. Um, so looking at more efficiencies and also building teachers' toolboxes and staff toolboxes, um, and so time, you know, here's this balance of, do we have enough time to give our own staff to develop this versus bringing in kind of the train-the-trainer model, an expert who can then help develop these skills. Um.
So the, the reason why I, I was really interested in talking about this is because of the numbers of, for incoming students, um, because of, I, I mean, I think it's the right thing to do. I mean, but I also wondered, you know, knowing that intervention, early intervention leads to the, the best outcomes. Do you know of any research about inclusion and what the outcomes are for students who, who have early inclusion at the primary school level and what that would mean for like, you know, the high school level, um, in terms of their programming?
So, uh, that's an interesting question. I'll probably answer it a couple of different ways. Um, yes, when you think of, uh, uh, early intervention, there's so many studies about how early intervention does create more positive outcomes. If, um, like, uh, in speech and language, you know, there are a lot of areas that early intervention really matters and really makes a difference. And those students close the gap much quicker. When you're talking about a student who has intellectual disability, that cognitive gap is never gonna be closed. Um, so it's almost more for me a social emotional issue of the inclusion of peers, of being part of the community, of feeling valued, of knowing they have their place, they're one of them. Um, and, and just like any other student, those are their classmates that they grow up with. Um, so in that regard, starting right off the bat, yes. But I, I think in some ways, and I think some parents might not agree with me, but structurally, uh, certainly at K two, inclusion is a lot, um, easier because there's such a range of developmental needs, uh, within the classroom. And the flexibility of those even pre-academic and academic skills is such a huge range. It becomes much harder socially to integrate and develop those true friendships and, and that ability to participate in a meaningful level in the higher grades and futures. Um, so, uh, while I'm not at all minimizing, you know, this is a K twelve need, this is a school, a community need. One person, one inclusion specialist cannot do it all.
Right.
Um, so I'm actually focusing the position on the middle school and high school.
Oh, you would start there. I thought we were starting at eight corners.
About eight corners is for the special education teacher due to the number.
Mm-hmm.
But the inclusion specialist, um, I would focus, I think, uh, the curriculum and demands and the strategies for nearly fully integrating and feeling part of the community is harder. Um, socially, behaviorally, and cognitively, the middle school and high school. I think our middle school has done a lot of work with it. Uh, we have, uh, a special ed person in class next year. Um, but the high school ha- has room to grow. You know, they're very much a department model. You know, this is going to be brand new for them. Not that we haven't had very disabled students involving in classes, um, to varying degrees, we certainly do. Um, but to do it through a co-teaching and a true inclusion experience, we do not have that.
So you're the expert, but I guess what I was envisioning is, um, sort of starting to get the most bang for the buck right from the beginning. Because like, let's say we have a child with emotional disturbance. If, if we start to include them early, will they be, will there be a great, greater likelihood that with more, um, in- intense supervision or intense programming that they're, that they'll be, um, have greater chances of success as they get older and as they move through their curriculum? And so we'll, so I mean, twofold. I mean, one is because I'm really interested in that and think, obviously agree with, with the concept. But also from a, an efficiency perspective, is there a way for a long-term efficiency with that?
So, um, so there's, I think there's still a disconnect in how I'm, I'm probably explaining this. At K two, most of the students are included for most of their day in gen ed. Um, and so that's where you're looking at the level of adult support we provide at the K two level because those students are in, with their peers most of the time. Um, and that's the staffing impact that we feel at K two. We also, that is the first place where, um, that's where our first behavioral specialist began for those reasons. I mean, K two students are very good at regulating their behaviors or their emotions and really giving them tools to do that so that they can stay with their class. Um, so bang for the buck, that's where we started with our behavior interventions. And, um, also with the whole academic support model, uh, the gen ed support model. So I, I would, most of our special ed get, they're more mainstream the younger.
They are?
And then necessarily the older they get. Um, so, but that, that, that's all of the changes.
That, that helps, yeah.
And I, there's like a knowledge and a skill gap at our upper grades with the staff. Yet this person would really be helping to fill or helping to cultivate a culture where folks are working towards that.
Yeah, and, and I, it's really exciting, um, what the middle school has done this year with unified sports and the leadership summit. And, you know, all culturally, they're really embracing a lot of those things. And, um, and we have to kind of grow that up.
Yeah. I think your point's really good, Allison, and that the inclusion specialist feels to me like it's, um, when you get into the higher grades and things are more rigorous, it's, it's more, uh, less about behavior and social emotional than it is about adapting the curriculum so that a child can be successful.
I think it's that, but it's also the social piece. There is.
Well, you already have like a social divide that you need to solve, but it's also that the programming is more complex, right?
Correct. And there, um, you know, the academic rigor.
Right.
Um, and, um, there's academic rigor, K through twelve, I don't mean to, um, imply that. But the learning standards and, um, you know, it's more the level of modification.
The gaps become wider, yeah.
Dis稀hated, yeah, yeah.
The gaps become wider.
I agree.
So you said that you had contracted to some extent for inclusion assistance. When was that in?
We did. We, we, um, have been, oh, it might be, no, it's been, um, a lot longer. Uh, maybe four years now we've been doing it. Uh.
So currently we're doing it?
Currently we're doing it, but the person we're contracting with has moved. Um, and so they aren't as accessible. And so they come down once a month. Uh, and, but prior to that, uh, the person lived in the Portland area. Uh and but prior to that, uh the person lived in the Portland area, and so we have more time.
Who was it before her?
It's always been uh who we're currently using. Yeah, but now she's a professor at a farm and has moved and relocated.
What grades has she trained?
Uh uh three through eight.
And what's that cost from?
Oh, I paid for it out of local entitlement, it hasn't been in uh local budgets.
I've been using grant funds for supplemental services.
I've been using grants for that, and then um we did some shared cost savings when we did the school-wide training.
Right, we I think went and used some of the kidney money with.
But we also. We also she, we also had to run summer programs for new teams of students that are coming up and open that up to, I think two summers ago, there were twenty-two staff members that participated, and now we do three half-day sessions, so. Um but right now, given her availability, it's really more focused on certain IEP students rather than like general.
So if we were able to fund this position, um could we put count on any of that money to offset the cost?
Well, it's in our unexpected line under local entitlement, so it there isn't a particular number to it because uh just like with our audiology, our northeast speech and hearing, if we have to do an independent evaluation with a psychiatrist or psychologist, there's this pool of money that we call unexpected services.
So it's usually contracted services for a specific kidney that might arise that we hadn't budgeted before.
For contracts that we decide out.
Yeah.
Right. Um so I think what you're saying is would we save money by hiring a person and or be able to use some of the money that we're currently spending on consulting, right? Um but the fact that it's in the grant would mean that you could
But you can't.
Fund a portion of the position through the grant, but you then wouldn't be ensh- you wouldn't be assured that those grant funds would continue year after year.
We don't know what the grant allotment is, we probably won't know until the end of June. Um it's a significant, so generally the grant is over six hundred thousand dollars. I I think um people don't realize that as large as the special education budget is in the local fund, it doesn't pay for a lot of things. Um it doesn't pay for several of our key positions, it doesn't pay for any of our equipment, uh our supplies, our um professional development. Uh we have small lines in the local, but there's a significant, uh over half the grant is in personnel. Um and then it's these unexpected services. Uh sometimes if if we've just had an out-of-district placement, let's say right now, I would carry that through in the in the um grant money for a year until we could roll it in, you know, so there's all, yeah.
Until we had time and budget for it.
So there's all different ways that grant money is utilized, um so.
So did we say eighty thousand for that position?
I think it would be a professional position slot, what you're saying is eighty thousand.
Right, and we didn't actually have it as a, you know, that we didn't have it on our investment list, it was sort of a, you know, we also talked about list, um but I would budget it at the eighty thousand, which would be um somewhat under the teacher contract. That's the way that our behavior specialists are, are considered teachers and they're.
Professional staff.
Professional staff.
So is that a no?
Is that a no about?
I mean, I heard you say like.
Is there money somewhere else?
I I.
There isn't any money in the in the local budget, in the general fund budget.
No, you're asking if it could, if a percent of it could be, I could say, uh most likely it's a no because I think our main, we're vulnerable with our main care.
Mm-hmm.
And so we may have to shift costs to pick that main care up in the local and flip other things over to local entitlement since they can't be used for the same thing. So I I'm hesitant, um number one, because we don't know the figure, and number two,
Number one, we should fund it.
We know we're um.
I know, well, so then the other question is.
Just for. From when you're could start.
So then the other question is, I understand that this person that we have been contracting with is has moved. Is there someone else?
Uh no, actually, the other.
So then, so then how would we hire someone?
Well, in the sense of we've used two, no.
I don't, I don't mean to be flirty.
No, I I understand why that general.
Is there a market?
Is there a market? There is another specialist in New Hampshire that families have used for independent evaluations and they have come to the school and presented and worked with us. I don't know of another specialist who bills himself at the level of expertise that these two people do. I think it is main is emerging into kind of the inclusion. For example, we had, there was a phone consultation with our inclusion specialist and some of our high school staff with uh a high school in Phil- with a school system in Philadelphia about how they do inclusion. I mean, that's where we're going to look, you know, other states, Massachusetts, Philadelphia, so.
We should look to move to main.
So I think, you know, we're, we'd be looking at someone who has experience co-teaching, who has experience with uh universal design for learning, who has experience as a T- oh, a strategist.
And hiring someone, even if they don't have all of the experience, once you hone them, you can groom them and grow them. They're committed to the district, which is really different than trying to find someone who's willing to come and provide some contracted services uh on a limited or scattered basis, right?
Is is this role only effective if it's full-time, like what if it was a half, uh equipped by fatigue?
It's a starting thought.
It's just a matter of can you recruit someone for a full-time.
Can you get someone for a full-time, so, yeah, yeah, it's a specialized role, right, but um.
And never know. Mm-hmm. And sometimes.
Are there other things that they could do as well, right, so if if half of it, I'm just trying to think creatively. Um I'm not underwriting any position at all, but if it was only half-time funded for that and half-time funded, would we have need elsewhere?
I suppose that all depends.
Probably Harvard hire for the.
Yeah, you know, you you never know, some people want the part-time job.
Yes.
Some people wanna be paid as a contract service provider as a part-time job because their rate is much higher.
Right.
Um you you just never know, we we have had, um it's been surprising, some depending different times of year when we advertise, um there's a lot of people relocating to Maine, so we're tapping that resource as well.
The thing that you said that stuck with me was the train the trainer. You could say, everything that you've talked about over the course of the last few weeks, this trend you only see, it seems like a trend, right, that's going up.
Correct.
And so um even more educated and support, I mean, more support we can provide to our teachers earlier, they'll be even more effective in years from now. Um so it truly is an investment. It just that whether or not we could make that investment this year or not.
Right, what you might, and I, this is just a total brainstorm, you might think about like, can we send a team of teachers to some really high-quality conferences and try to build capacity in that way? Because we could do that for a fraction of the cost of hiring a person. It's not the same thing, you don't get the same return on investment, just think of Monique's chart that she had in the instructional coaches presentation. Um you'd still have to be coaching and someone kind of making sure that that work is happening and embedded, so.
So I I mean, that certainly is a valuable resource, but that is hard because if we focus, let's say, just on the high school, um it's, uh what gen ed team are you gonna send? Are you gonna send the team from, one from each major discipline who's currently working with the student?
Mm-hmm.
Um and then they'll never have that teacher again.
Right.
Hmm. Well, the, I was piggybacking off the turnkey idea, it wouldn't be, the intent wouldn't be that you go and keep the knowledge.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, right, but.
I just, I think that we should really try to figure out a way to put something, I I I think that it's something that we need to start seriously talking about, and I'd love to figure out a way to try to put something into the budget.
I think if we looked at it as a part-time position, I would have a person just focused at the high school.
Can can I ask you another question? When you came in, you first said you've attended half of the CDS meetings for for incoming students, ki- kindergartners.
For, right, that are already in special education.
Are all of your referrals coming from CDS?
Uh yes, because for kindergarten.
Right.
Because those students are already on an IEP need. I don't go to any other student, right, it's only that.
Oh, because they're not flagged unless the CDS has already flagged them.
Correct.
Meaning the number could come, go up after they've started kindergarten?
Yes, we still, uh it will go up, that's a guarantee.
They're always starting to come in kindergarten.
There are students that are in a referral at CDS right now that um if they qualify, even though they're currently not identified, they will, could be before kindergarten starts. Um but the number will increase.
So CDS only screens those kids who have been referred prior to pre-K and they've sought out their their services, right? But there's gonna be kids.
For a half break.
And we have uh and I think part of the proposal you heard at K two, we have maybe um students who haven't been in a preschool or things like that, they haven't been referred, but they come in with a huge amount of need.
Hmm.
Um and so they're referred rather quickly, but it really does tap general ed, you know, resources. Because they're students that should have been receiving early intervention services.
But until they're formally identified as needing an IEP, are you considered general education? You have to find the resources to support them that way.
Thank you.
When are you current, you said you're halfway through when you finish?
Um yeah, and well, um.
The day after first and second meeting?
Uh yeah, I have, uh I think next week is sort of a a big week, but um there's one that happens after the sixteenth, but I think most of them are done the day of the sixteenth, they will be done on the day of.
Like you and I were taking a look at it, yeah.
Again, um potentially if we could reduce by one ed tech, in regards to the CDS meetings, that's where I think that there is a a potential bu- budget change if we could reduce the ed tech count down by one, um.
When will you do that?
Uh the tw- uh probably the sixth, well, yeah, and uh and.
End date? May, after September.
In in a couple of weeks, but you know, I I could find out something next week if if um a a student.
A student you think is coming, you would know, is that?
Correct, correct, you know, so and I think, you know, it does go without saying that
Or you think you have any student coming?
It's only a phone call away, literally, that things change in special education. You know, failing moves here and things like that, so.
Yeah, we just added the ed tech this spring, and the reason that we were able to do that was because that we had breakage in the budget because we had to personal turnover, so.
But even if we did have breakage, we would still have to provide the ed tech for, we'd front in a counter, you know.
Constant, we would still be doing it, right, we'd have to find it somewhere else. So hypothetically speaking.
Yes.
If everything stays as it is today, and we think we go without an ed tech, that would reduce us from the ask of nine to eight,
Correct.
which is forty-five thousand, which is half of the inclusion ask. So instead of just getting rid of the ed tech, we could add up a half-time inclusion.
Potential inclusion.
Creative, thank you, creative, thank you. Um and you don't necessarily have to make a hire immediately.
And do you feel like we're ready for that? I mean, if if that if that was budgeted for, our students are ready for it.
I think, I mean, this is.
Our need is there, yeah, our need is apparent, we have.
Right.
Uh this work has to be done this year at the high school because of uh of the population we have.
Sure.
So um this will have that work, be much more powerful and inclusive to all.
I think staff will feel more supported. Um it's still a huge change, it's a big learn curve, as Alison said, it's a mindset, so it's a complete shift from um maybe what they have been thinking is best for students, but you know, we know more, so we have to do better with what we know now and.
And the high school staff is really receptive, uh every everyone is really receptive, what they want, the training they wanna understand.
What they need the tools to do it well.
Um and and I think adult support is only as good as we can train them and teach them how to do the job.
Well, that's interesting, what if we did start in December?
Um yeah, I mean, that's certainly a thing that that we do in budgets, um and we haven't, we haven't.
Kids are coming in August.
We we haven't typically done it because we're we're on a school-year basis. It's very common on the town side, or I should say common on the town side, where if they're starting a position, they might start it halfway through the year. So that it's not such an impact in the first year of the budget, and then they can plan for it the second year of the budget. Um and, you know, Julie's right, it 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 does change your planning if you're bringing someone aboard for a school situation.
It's gonna be harder to hire.
Yeah, it goes back to the recruitment.
Yeah. I guess I would just be interested to know if we did that, if we even put it out for half, if we're gonna put it in the budget against being hypothetically, is is there even anyone that we can hire?
I wouldn't, there's some sort of, we don't know.
You would sort of nationally, you'd put it out, like in education, you'd get in school spring and like a broader.
Discovery exercise.
Well, I I think our, I think people do access our serving school, our main site, um because we have many teacher applicants from out of state or um.
We're still a popular place to move down.
Well, I would think that that would be such an exciting challenge for somebody in that field.
I also, you know, uh our person that we work with right now may have some recommendations of
Some.
people that are, that she's aware of or that she's worked with and she might help us network.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alison.
All right.
I, uh, thank you.
That was helpful.
Sorry, these are difficult conversations.
Well, no, but they have to happen, it's just um they're not definitive, you know, there's.
Yeah. A lot of gray.
There's a lot of gray, yeah. And we want to do the best by our kids, when you have competing needs when it comes to a budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go through our list now?
Go through the list or should we go through the questions? Uh well, I think the list would be really quick, okay, um just to point out what I've messed with. Um the last time we sat together, we had uh three items down, we had included an increase in the employer share for Maine Purse, and I didn't note this, but this is for the PLD, which is the stands for participating local district, but it means the municipal side, not the teacher side. Um and the good news on that is that I reached out to Maine Purse because I was getting conflicting information from them. I was getting information that they were proposing to increase the employer's costs, but then they just sent me something that said, oh, your cost is ten percent, which is what I had budgeted for. So, long story short, I reached out to them and said, what the heck? And the the answer was, yes, we are planning to increase the employer's share, but not in FY twenty, we wanna do it incrementally. So what we have in the budget is currently sufficient for our needs, and so that's changed from a uh an add of like eight thousand dollars to a zero.
Okay.
Okay.
Um the next thing down just below that first yellow block is that debt service costs came in. You see my note says that Ruth provided an actual cost of one eleven, two seventy-two for um this is for the bond issue that they're currently preparing to be issued this month. Um and it would be principal and interest on the school's portion of the funding that's being raised. This number adds forty-one, two seventy-two to what I put in the original proposal because I estimated only seventy thousand dollars this year. I have exact figures for the prior years because they're done and they're closed, and we know what our costs are. So the only estimated piece was for what we hadn't done yet. Um and I've added the forty-one, two seventy-two, but this just happened today, and Ruth is actually going back and forth with the bond council to try to refine that, to try to make sure that we have the best possible price tag for FY twenty. And so that would be, um in my understanding, that would be the most of an increase that we would have. But it's going to be a town-wide conversation because the town also has the same issue. They've got the debt ser- the debt um payments will be for CIP projects being funded on both the town and the school side. So when we sit with the council next week, they may have already had some conversations about it, um and I think this number is going to shift, and I think it's gonna shift downward, but I wanted to put that place a little bit there. Um then the next, the second yellow blob is also new. Um I reached out to PATHS and Westbrook Vogue to find out whether we really actually needed to have anything in our budget, and I think I said this a lot at our last meeting, that um because. and I think I said this a lot at our last meeting, that, um, because the state started funding the CTE schools directly just this year, this is the first year it's happened, and in the initial conversations, both PATHS and Westbrook said, if the state, under the EPS formula, doesn't give us everything that we need to run our programs, we're still gonna be allowed to, and will, reach out to the sending schools and ask y'all to pay your share of the, the programming that's not covered by state funding. Um, so this year, we've had no bills from them. Um, and so I reached out and said, hey, you know, you guys have your budget together for next year, are you anticipating the ill-sufficient subsidy to cover your costs? And the answer that I got from PATHS was, as long as the EPS or the subsidy amounts that are out there right now don't change, then they're all set, they don't need us. I haven't heard back from Westbrook, um, but I did just do this, you know, within the last week, so, um, I'm assuming they'll answer in a similar way. So what I did was I just took it and cut it in half and figured it's.
But this could be double.
It could be minus nine thousand, if, if both of them say to me, yeah, we're, we're good. Um, and the, I, I did it very, um, the, the nine thousand is actually a, a rational calculation. It's based on what our proportion was of the prior year's, um, bills for those two schools when we were paying them directly. And, um, it's a proportionate value of what they call their part two budget, which is usually capital projects and equipment, but it was the area where they felt like they might not get full funding from the state, and that, that was the one place. They weren't so worried about their operating budget, because they felt like the state was gonna be able to cover that for them. Um, then our next yellow blob, you'll see an add of sixty thousand, which is what we just talked about with the main care situation. Um, so we, we used to have a minus sign in front of total LC adjustments, now we have a plus sign.
So above the sixty thousand is a reduced clerical support position?
And that's there as like a question mark, because we knew that Allison was gonna join us this evening, and, um, I mean, we, we could still say, this team could say, wow, you know, we really gonna have to find some place to cut some money, so could we make that position a point six?
Instead of five days a week.
Allison just expressed very eloquently, I think, that she could use a full-time position, she'd prefer that. But she also understands that if it's a pressure point and we need to find some money, that she would rather have, you know, a full-time than a part-time, but she would make do with what she gets.
So can you remind me, because I, I, I don't remember where this reduction is?
I think it's a compliance clerk in here, isn't it?
Yeah.
It is, yeah.
It's a final adjustment.
Okay.
So it would be a reduction to the proposed investment. And so it's budgeted at forty-five, right, so we, if we said we wanted to make it not a full-time position, then we wouldn't take out the whole forty-five, but we might take out a portion of it.
Point four.
Um, so that, it's still on the list as a sort of, you know, if we're, if we need to make a decision, then that's a place we could look. Um, and.
So what Allison said was minimally three days, but preferred five, so it could be an eighteen thousand dollar reduction, if you go from a one point oh.
Right. So point six of a forty-five thousand dollars.
So that's a central office position?
No, it's, um.
Is that something Wentworth, that she was talking about, is it?
I don't know where this person would physically be housed, um, but it would be a clerical position.
District-wide special education is what she's talking about.
Completely.
Um, the person who would be responsible for doing the.
Compliance.
It would be a point six of a forty-five thousand dollar budget.
Right.
If that's what we said, which would just eighteen thousand dollars less than forty-five.
No, eighteen thousand would be the reduction, yeah, in that yellow box you'd have it too.
Yeah. And I think, actually, Allison mentioned Wentworth, because that was one of the places where she was trying to use existing staff.
If you did that.
Yeah.
And asked them to pick up some hours to do, um, some of this work that needs to get done, and I think that it becomes too, well, what she's experiencing is that it becomes kind of piecemeal, and there's not enough time in the day for them to do it consistently,
Right.
and to be a true point person, because it's sort of tacked on, so they're already, um, job reduced.
Plus, it's a very technical role, and so even when Allison was gonna pilot this, I was sort of skeptical, if I could be honest, because it's not something, it's kind of like doing data analysis, like you can't just like walk away and like, oh, take a phone call and then get right back to it, right? So there's a loss of efficiency, but also effectiveness, and, um, there's so many very specific deadlines and things like that when it comes to the compliance aspects, that having somebody who really like that's their focus, um, is going to be the most efficient way to do it.
Is there another part-time, or is there a part-time position that is more, um, that could be more structured in the day, rather than, you know, picking up the phone or whatever this Wentworth person was doing, that it could be combined with?
Mm-hmm.
Is there another position that we're looking at that?
I think this was the position that we were looking at, and saying, hey, maybe with some of, like, maybe your spare time, which appears to be spare time, plus a maximum of five additional hours, could you do this job?
Five, yeah.
And what we've learned is that no, that will not work.
Okay.
Or is not working well.
And someone you would hire to do the inclusion specialist is a lot, same type of person that we had this up?
Totally different, period.
Yeah.
Um.
There's no new asks that we could reduce each a little bit. Somebody that would be more structured, more, um, like a analytical or something, yeah, yeah.
To these new investments? Um, no, 'cause really the only other things you have are teaching positions outside the HR specialist role. And again, I think it's just a matter of, do you wanna do two things at a time, or do you wanna do one thing while?
I wanna make a process, I mean, I don't know how it's gonna be received, but I'm gonna say it anyway. Um, we got this list of de- very detailed priorities from the leadership council, and inclusion specialist is listed under other proposed investments deferred to FY twenty-one future plan. So while I think it's obviously something that Allison needs and our kids need, there ha- there must have been a reason behind that being its place in our packet. And so I'm a little confused, if I'm being honest, why all of a sudden this one position is being singled out and kind of elevated to a talking point for us at this point.
Well, because I asked for it to be, I mean, I think it's important, given the numbers, and it's.
But the numbers that you're talking about are the numbers of the K two, which is, she said, wouldn't, that's not where she was.
Right, I understand that, and, but that's why I asked for it, and I just think that we need to start having that discussion. I think that, um, that's a valuable position, and, and that's, that's something I wanna talk about, trying to include in the budget. So you may disagree with me, but that's, that's why.
Well, it's not that I disagree, it's just we are re-prioritizing our prioritized list.
Well, we, we did.
We are, because we haven't made any decisions yet.
Yeah, we did, we didn't, we, this is our chance to, I mean, this was the leadership council's prioritization, and, and we have the same ability to say, we think that there are things that are important too, and so that's my effort at, at exploring that.
It's not a criticism, I just.
I don't, I don't take it as one, I'm just answering your questions, you said, how did, how did we do that? And that's my understanding of how that happened.
And, you know, sadly, I would say that I think many of the things that fall low on the list are, because we're in such a place, and we've been in such a place of, what's the critical need, um, that, you know, this year, we really pushed the leadership council to say, we want proposals for everything that you need, where in the years past, they would not even be talking about it, because they just said, no, it's not gonna get in the budget. But we believe that what this does is helps our community understand, um, you know, what, not only what the process is, but these are things that need attention. I mean, if Anne, like, or Anne Lovejoy was sitting here, she'd tell you this RTI position is like oxygen for her school.
Right, I know. Right.
So it's hard, but unfortunately, part of our decision-making is, well, it's something we don't currently have, how do we support what we currently have?
Yeah.
Like the kids who need to take STEM classes at the high school, there's, you know, that, then we don't have a teacher for that.
Right.
Um, and it's, it's not a good place to be, it's not, doesn't feel good for the leadership team to make that list either, so just.
Yeah. Right.
And we've said this a few times, that there, there, there's a reason why all of these proposals exist, because the leadership team said, we need these things. And then, you know, if it were up to us and we had an infinite amount of resources, we'd be doing all the things. So it's, as Julie said, it's, you know, it's sort of trying to decide what can we.
When they go around and present their proposals, it's, each person visually remember, um, like the whiteboard gets to rank.
They're all high priority.
Acquire high, medium, or low, and everyone at first, when they're just doing their own, you know, department or school, it's high to medium-high. And then once they hear the K twelve conversation, things like the HR specialist, which we had low, but high in our minds, but low comparative, they said, no, that actually needs to go to high. So it's after they hear the quote K twelve perspective, which is why we.
Right, and I feel like we've, you know, we, we have heard a lot of the K twelve perspective at this point, like, and it is hard, like, when, when people from each department present, and they, and they, you know, tell their, their compelling needs, it's really hard to then go back to the sheet and just be black and white about the numbers, like, there's no question.
Well, because there's nothing frivolous there, there's nothing where you're going, oh, jeez, well, you know, that's a nice idea, but.
Right, right.
Well, it's really, it really speaks to how much they valued the whole organization, and then they get to, yeah, other things.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah, there's, sometimes there's a little crying, but.
Oh, gosh.
Travis, try and get through the next couple of weeks without any more crying. There's definitely a teamwork.
All right, let's go back to the sheet.
Back to the sheet, okay, so, um, the second ch- chunk is SBFC discussion slash decision points, I've added a five thousand dollar amount there under strategic planning, because we currently have, um, fifteen thousand dollars budgeted in that line, and I think that really the only thing that we'd be looking to do with that money in the coming year would be to further superintendent search, there are other things we've used it for in the past, um, but, you know, that's kind of job one. Uh, but I understand that we may be looking at more like a twenty dollar, a twenty thousand dollar price tag down to fifteen. Um, and that's.
That was, so that was based off of, um, if you want to use a different provider. Because that was not a decision that we have made as a board, um, but it was, it came up in conversation, um, about the potential to use, to have the opportunity to explore other vendors.
So, my understanding was that when we realized that we weren't gonna hire an interim, we knew then that we would need additional money for a superintendent search. I did not realize that that meant we would need twenty thousand dollars budgeted. If, uh, I mean, I understand what you're saying, that there are, there are vendors that it would be that much money. Um, are we saying we wanna keep our options open for that much money for, potentially?
I think that's what Liam, all that she heard, uh, loss, we've talked about loss.
Or if, as you reflect on the à la carte sort of many choices that you made, were there other things that now you're like, oh, we really should also do this?
Well, I knew that, I knew that we thought maybe that would have been a little bit better, but it would still have been the loss.
Still wouldn't have been, even with the savings.
It still would have been, twenty thousand would have been about eight, okay, let's take that one, but, but yeah.
Well, I think, do you think that we should clarify that?
I, I mean, that's just a board decision, that we need to either, um, so we can actually have a, we can receive it more instant, or I think that call.
Right. Mm-hmm.
So this is that fifteen thousand currently?
That's right.
And what has that been, what, like, what was that, has that been spent on historically, other than superintendent?
It's really depended on, on the goals of the district in a given year, um, we've used it for data analysis, we've used it for the enrollment study.
Enrollment study.
Um, it's really kind of a, it's just a contracted services line, but it's a contracted services in this, in the service of strategic planning, more so than instruction.
Right, we used it for the firm that did the start time survey, analyzed the data, so we had a neutral third party.
Um, organizational planning. Um.
Um, also if we need any study done, as you're looking at long-range planning needs, if you need to do any.
There's already ten thousand dollar line in facilities.
We put, we put some money in the facilities for that, and that's, that is still, you know, a place that, that's a new piece, yeah. Um, and that, that grew out of the fact that we weren't really able to use the capital budget planning line in the same way that we expected, um, if we didn't have it connected with a specific project, that's come up in recent years.
Okay.
So I actually.
I think we do need to discuss as a board, potentially, uh, our retreat, what are our priorities, and, you know, twenty thousand dollars is a lot for one project, for one surge, but if they don't end up using somebody that would cost that much,
Yeah.
then actually can we reduce this significantly, if that's all that it's budgeted for? If there's nothing else that in the next year we're gonna be spending.
Right, and so the question on that one would be like a timing question, but, you know, sometime between now and.
You only spend what you need, no matter what, when it comes to the budget, so we don't spend it just 'cause it's there, we only.
I know.
But what you can't do is add money to the budget after.
I understand that. But we still, we still need to be responsibly budgeting and to the hookers.
Right, you know, you don't wanna just sort of say, oh, well, we might, we might need it at every.
I don't wanna.
If there's, if there's a, if there's a significant, um, agreement that, that you're gonna do something that might have a twenty thousand dollar price tag, that's a different conversation.
Because I think we, it's likely that we would save no more than ten.
That we would save?
That we would say, we only need ten.
I agree, I agree, and that's, that's a little bit bad, very little, but.
Right.
Um, and that's the difference between MSNA and possibly another vendor or other services.
Yep.
Um, so it sits there as a topic of discussion still, I mean, none of these things are decided, they're just out there
Okay. Fine.
so that we can remember that we've talked about them and change them out, well.
So we'll take that, that action away and try and get that on the agenda for retreats anyway.
Um, do you want me to delete the line, or do you want me to just leave it alone there for now?
We just, I think that.
Yeah.
Exactly. Kate, I do think we should move the reduced clerical position question mark down to scoreboard decision.
Yeah.
I'm not hearing a final decision on that at this moment, but that's a decision point.
Absolutely, and it kind of goes along with the inclusion specialist. I put inclusion slash UDL, which is universal design for living, but she has two different people or positions in mind, but.
These acronyms.
I know.
It has to offer.
It's not universal design for living, it's for learning, I don't even know my acronyms, duh.
Learning.
So, yeah, I'll s- I'll move that down, because Allison has made her view clear, and she's not advocating for an adjustment, but we might, depending on circumstances. Um, so if we flip to the second page, I think, um, everything else is sort of, I was going there.
And, sorry, Kate, just for the, the salary projections?
Oh, right, right, um, so there is a potential that we could adjust our budget of projections for, um, the teachers and professionals group, because as you know, that's an estimate based on the temporary contract, based on people moving on their steps on the expiring contract, and then a guestimate of what, uh, a COLA might be agreed on, possibly a adjustment might be agreed on by the negotiations team. Um, so I haven't had a sense that we know enough about negotiations right now, because there, I don't think there's even still a proposal on the table from the union yet.
There is, but they're both solo.
Um, but I don't know that it's include salaries. Oh, no, that's what I mean, yeah, I mean, I know they have language out there, but they haven't talked about a salary table, or.
You would have to have.
Yeah, you've been, some of the other conversation, maybe you should do that, okay.
Yes, yes, so it would really be up to, to Amy and the negotiations team to talk about how comfortable they feel with the resources that have been provided to them to negotiate with, and that's the whole basis of that conversation.
Right.
Um, but there's, you know, there's a potential to say, well, you know, we, we don't think we have the right amount in our budget, and we think we can do the job with the next dollars. Um, so, yeah, that's still in there as a, in my yellow, yellow blogs. Thank you. All right, so second page, we talked the last time about, uh, the plumogen sound system, and the fact that we gotta reduce scope and new quote, and I think that's the same that you saw the last time. Um, on the scoreboard, we had, uh, lots of conversation about that. Um, I think that the way we left it was that we didn't really feel like we needed to do a lumina gem right away, that we weren't really convinced that there would be significant savings, and in fact, we confirmed that with Todd this morning, that, um, he didn't feel that there would be enormous savings by doing the two at once, um, which was our, his and my original concept. Meanwhile, we don't have an actual quote yet, I don't think, Mike was getting.
So what I've asked Mike to do is to go back to the vendor and get specific, um, quote. So what I've asked Mike to do is to go back to the vendor and get specific, um, quotes, and I asked him to get kind of like a high, mid, low quote, so what is the, you know, the one that he's envisioning that will allow to generate revenue through advertising, he can get that quote, you all can see it. Um, what's, what's it going to cost to replace exactly what we have, and are there more efficient options? And so like one example that I said was you could instead of a plumber gym, replacing, because there's actually two scoreboards in each gym, remember, so that's what drives up the cost
One each gym.
of that, you could put one full scoreboard and then you could have a tinier one that just shows like the score at the other end of the gym.
Wait, you're saying there's two scoreboards in each gym?
Yeah, yeah.
I guess there.
Right, and, um, so we're really talking about two or four.
So we're talking about four scoreboards.
Right, and so, you know, that, I said, well, let's get the quote for that, but that feels like taking a step backwards, and I don't know that that would be what we would want to do, but one of the other things that I've been trying to do is get my hands on some data to really understand how much plumber gym is used, um, how much it's not used. There's no really good clean data source for that, I can see that, um, like, actually, I can pull it right up. For example, Community Services blocks that space through RevTrack, so it shows them as having like three hundred and twenty-six reservations, but that, some of those reservations are us. They, it just gets scheduled through that, or if it needs to be maintenance, um, if there's maintenance that needs to happen and the gym is closed, that looks like a reservation. Um, or if, because they have to put it, you know, so people don't think it's available.
Yeah, they block off potentially, yeah.
So we don't really have like the cleanest way to really, um, assess that. And then we don't have clean data either on, okay, who uses the sound system and who doesn't?
Yeah.
Because what might happen is, for example, Southern Maine Craftsman uses it for three days, um, annually, and, um, they might, it doesn't say that they're using the sound system, but they might say to the custodian, like, hey, can we get a mic? We really need to make an announcement, and the custodian will go and get the mic and set it up for them, so, um, that happens, I think, more than not. Is like people get there and they're like, yeah, Anne, can we, you know, do this? So, um, last year, according to RevTrack, or RecTrack, rather, there were four hundred and twenty reservations for plumber gym. Um, and this is January two thousand eighteen to December two thousand eighteen, because sometimes there will be, you know, something at four and then something at seven.
I thought you said that when they use that gym, though, they're using, if it's not a school program, they're using their own equipment.
So that was what some people think, but then upon actually asking what happens, that, that custodian example I just gave you is what happens often.
Okay.
So although they might not be using our scoreboard, they might need to make an announcement and ask to use the sound system, um.
Is the sound system, it's completely unusable?
Um.
Or it just, it's old?
The current sound system, it's just old, it's, there's something to do with like, the, I, I don't even want to use the wrong words, um, but.
Yeah. It's like our FCC conversation, we know, we know none of the correct ones.
Right, it's like the FCC conversation. It's the original sound system from like nineteen ninety that was put in when the gym was put in, same with the scoreboard. Um, so they're just aging and failing, and what I did learn about the scoreboard, because I wasn't saying the right thing, Mike sent me a very detailed email about it, um, was that like, you know how digital eights are like eight, blind, slant, slime, slant, nine, right? So it's not just the light bulb, replacing the light bulb, if a, if a bulb goes, you have to replace the whole strip, they're on like strips together. Um, and that's what makes it so inefficient.
Todd was saying it's actually kind of hard to find the path to cars.
Right, right.
Um, when you say the vendor, quote from the vendor, we only use one vendor to get quotes?
No, but in this situation, like he, this is somebody who he has a working relationship with, and it's someone who's accessible and local, and we were asking him, you know, to turn it around in twenty-four hours for us, because I wanted to have it for this conversation, um, but I didn't get it by four thirty, so.
We would typically get, you know, three or four quotes, or even do a bid process depending on what it is.
How it's big or how it is. But what I, what wasn't making sense is that we were saying it's cost efficient to do them together, but yet if we're only going to do one gym, it's half the cost, so I was like, give us more concrete numbers,
More than.
which is typically what happens between first and second reading, um, we get refined quotes and.
Well, what's the process for, for him making the request to begin with, I mean, did he get a quote to come up with the estimate?
Mm-hmm, and so he puts in a proposal, just like Allison would put in a proposal for the inclusion specialist, same sort of thing, justifies the cost, um, would include a quote or an estimate based on, and, um, and it looks a lot of different ways depending upon what they're asking for. Um, and then he really was only asking to do one gym, um, and then Kate and Todd, and when they met and go over the CIP budget and say, okay, what can we do, what can't we do, they put both of them in for the reasons that Kate explained the last time. Um, and so now, I mean, the choice is really now, do you want to do nothing? Do you want to do one gym, or do you want to do both gyms?
So he was only asking for plumber?
Yes, yes. And just saying eventually we may need to do alumni, um. And then it got turned into we have to do them.
Gotcha, because Kate and Todd said that nobody needs them. So, so I think that that number that we have in there, we can change to an accurate number for the cost of plumber, and then we can decide is that something that we're going to move forward with, or we're going to defer.
So the thirteen, the.
The thirteen thousand reduction is a, sorry.
Kooky's over, but that, that was just, we got a new quote, so that's the reduction there, just this.
The reduction of thirteen thousand for the sound system is accurate, because we have a new quote and
Okay.
we reduced the scope of the project, so basically he said, you know, I, I can't do it for that, I can't have the top of the line
Well, and he, he refined the quote, right.
uh, quote from you, I want you to give me something that will be adequate, but not, you know.
Or I think he was, it included replacing the speaker or something, and he said, let's not replace the speaker, and just do the technical pieces.
Right.
So. So we're saying now, I mean, if we took it based on the new assessment, it would be twelve thousand dollars for a plumber gym sound system.
Including installation.
At forty thousand, uh, and forty thousand dollars for a plumber gym scoreboard?
Right, two scoreboard, that's installation.
And, and, yeah, sorry, and, and nothing for alumni is where we're at.
Yeah.
That's where, yeah, that's, that's what this is sort of referring to, and the only thing that's a fluffy number is the reduction of forty thousand from the original eighty thousand, because we're not sure that's entirely accurate, but that we're, that we need to cut it in half, or, um, like.
The other part too is this isn't going to change your bottom line during that budget ask, because this is a project that was scheduled to be bonded, so although that will help in debt service in years' future.
Alumni, the scoreboards were considered, um, appropriated, it was the buses that. Right? I have the, right here, um. Athletic equipment, a hundred and five thousand is slated to be appropriated, so that actually would change the.
Which one, this one? What is the, the scoreboard?
It was, yeah, the scoreboards.
And the sound system?
And the sound system together, with one together under high school athletic equipment, and it was slated according to the town schedule to be appropriated.
And the total ask was?
For both things was a hundred and five thousand.
Okay.
Twenty-five originally for the sound system and eighty for the. Does that work?
Yeah.
Eighty for the, um, scoreboards.
So right now, the most it would be, if both the prep, plumber gym was fully done, would be fifty-two thousand, that would be the most, so it would be a
Right.
sixty-one thousand dollar reduction. Sixty-three. Or fifty-two. And unless town already included that in the adjustments that he made, I don't know, one, for what he was shifting from appropriated to bonded.
I don't think there's been any, any votes taken on that, but if it was shifted from appropriated to bonded.
I'm thinking of cause.
Yeah, I think, um. I don't think that they had the school, yeah, that's just the truck, yeah.
I think he only did the truck.
Oh, that's right, that's right, because I have that on our chart, that the truck was going to be shifted from appropriated to bonded.
Yeah, they didn't, they didn't discuss bonding the school upwards, than I know of.
And I don't know that he.
And I just watched the last council plane, it's.
That being the issue.
Typically with under a hundred thousand, they don't, but then they did with the vehicle, so.
Um, I think the last, well, no, there's two things, one is about impact fees, and I'll let Julie talk about that in a sec. Um, the bus purchase amount, that's another exciting conversation I had today. Um, you probably remember that in our current CIP budget, there are three buses, and then there's a note that says that we're going to receive grant funding for a lot of them, right? Um, so a couple of things, one is that I brought, um, some fleet information, and we've had some conversations there, but as far as the money is concerned, right off the bat, um, what's changed is that in the past, you had to purchase the buses from the vendor, pay the vendor the full price, take the old bus off the road, because the whole point of this with DEP is that you're decommissioning a stinky bus and you're putting a nice new efficient bus on the road. Um, and then eventually down the road, you would get the funding from the DEP. Um, and so because we didn't know exactly when that, what that timetable would look like, I put it in as an expenditure of a hundred percent, and I didn't put any offsetting revenue in, so that's what, um, you know, a bunch of us have been talking about. Well, the, the cool thing is that with this VW settlement, the, I think probably because the funding is guaranteed in their pockets already, the, um, DEP worked out a deal directly with the vendor. So we will receive a discounted price upfront on that vehicle. And we do not have to budget for the full cost of the vehicle, because we will only have to pay the portion of it that DEP isn't going to pay, and then they're going to pay the vendor for the revenue of it.
That's great, that's great. So we can automatically.
So we can shrink our, uh, request, our CIP request by the seventy-five thousand dollars, which is what, more or less the amount that the DEP is going to come up with us, for us. We'll get the exact amount from O'Connor before we do second reading, so we can know which is the penny, um, but that's the ballpark of it. Um, I did make a note there that because the buses were originally slated to be bonded, that it wouldn't reduce the appropriations request, the tax request, but it will reduce our capital budget and then therefore debt service in the future, so.
Okay.
It's still a cool thing. Um.
The topic of buses too.
Should we go, we keep going with buses?
Yeah.
Alright, so, um, this fancy thing is, um. Our.
Please.
Our fleet of vehicles.
Librarians.
Um, our fleet of vehicles, and I sorted this, um, based on the type of vehicle, so the first page you can see is all the buses, and they're sorted by their year, um, model year, and then on the back, if you flip it over, you've got the passenger vans, um, the lunch truck, and the facilities and maintenance vehicles, so this is everything that, that we own that is a vehicle on the road. So I took a couple of notes in here to help guide our thoughts, um, the first bus, the oldest bus on there is actually, hasn't been replaced yet, because it's one of the few that we have with a wheelchair lift, and it's not dead yet, so we've actually kept it limping along, even though it's well past the age when we replaced other buses. Um, but until it dies, we're using it because it has a wheelchair lift.
Well, I thought you said that the recommendation was ten years.
It absolutely is, and this is only because we don't have a new wheelchair bus to replace it. Um, we did get a new wheelchair bus this fall, and I think this one will be going away, um, as long as we've got sufficient capacity for the kiddos, but it's kind of a, it's an anomaly, because normally we would take that, that vehicle off the road. You'll see that there, and actually that vehicle was scheduled to be taken off the road and should have been gone, but because we still had the need for the wheelchair lift, we kept it alive. And the next three, you see here, the, the yellow ones are the three that are slated to be replaced because of their age. Two thousand six model year, two thousand seven model year, so they're over ten years old. Um, but you can see that there's a, there's a jump there, and those two thousand six and two thousand sevens are the last of the older buses that we bought in a large quantity, um, which is why this is the last year that we are trying to do three buses to get back on target for ten years. Um, there's two buses that I've highlighted that are, um, special ed wheelchair small buses, the twenty-two passengers, seeing the seating capacity. And then there are six buses that are propane buses.
Sorry, Kate, when you say wheelchair, do they have a wheelchair lift?
They do, but they're, they only have the capacity for small, uh, number of kids. So you've got, you could have a big long bus that also has a wheelchair lift in the back, but has capacity to carry a lot of kids, or you can have a small bus that has less capacity, um, but has wheelchair capacity. Um, typically nowadays, we will buy a long bus, because it's just so much more flexible, and you can always take seats out of a long bus, and, you know, you can convert space for wheelchairs if you have the lift, but, or you can put seats back if you don't need it. Um, the short buses aren't really that efficient.
Right, you can never substitute a wheelchair bus that's only twenty-two capacity for a regular bus.
For a bus to take a run in.
Exactly.
Exactly, um, the ones that are marked propane, you'll notice that, um, the first four that came in in, uh, twenty eleven and twenty twelve, they have seventy-seven passenger capacity, which is smaller than our eighty-four passenger buses, the big diesels. Um, and that is because O'Connor was only making buses with propane that had a smaller seating capacity. So we have actually run into a little bit of an issue with the, um, two-tiered bus run, and the longer runs and the fewer drivers, where those propane buses that we currently own are not the most efficient vehicles for us right now, we really need the extra seats. Um, so it's a little bit of a pinch for us, but we are still using them. And, um, then there's two in twenty fifteen that we bought from Thomas, from Cressy, because they had a slightly larger seating capacity, and we still had the, um, wish for the propane. Where you see those propane buses, the reason that we purchased them is, well, for one reason, it is that they're clean energy, and that's a great thing, but it was because we got DEP grants that were paying, um, for the, the first four, they paid about half the cost, and for the second, uh, first four and the second two, that doesn't work, um, the next two, they paid twenty-five percent of the cost, which is so significant on a hundred thousand dollar vehicle, and those grants. Um, the DEP grant that's happening right now is, um, they don't have a grant cycle going right now for just their own funding, um, because of the VW settlement, I think, because they're just saying, oh, we have this windfall of money, we're going to distribute that, and we're going to use our grant um, mechanisms to get that money out to the communities, and then, um, I wouldn't be surprised if the feds went back to providing funding on a rotating basis. There are some drawbacks to the propane buses, you can see in my summary down at the bottom, we've got twenty-two full-size diesels, we've got two short diesels, and six propane buses, which have the smaller capacity, and the other issue with the propane buses is that refueling stations for propane are not, um, quite as widespread as your normal gas station. And although there are places to refuel across the state, we tend to keep those buses local, because we can refuel them at public works, so if they're just cruising around town, or they go to Portland, or you know, even, uh, a little bit wider range, we typically wouldn't send them to Bangor, or, you know, um, on a field trip to Boston or anything like that, because the, of the uncertainty of the fueling. Um, so what else was I going to tell you about this? Um, one of the, the, the reason we kind of started the conversation was Alyssa saying, you know, do we have too many vehicles, could we downsize our fleet? And could we sell some buses and save some money or make some money? And, um, so I've, I know that Joanne had some emails going around about that. Um, and of course Sarah's been out of town, but I think Joanne talked with her. I talked with public works about it, when we were having this conversation, um, about, uh, the funding and the, and the grant, I brought it up at the same time, and, and, um, Ed Alden, who's the head of the maintenance department and takes care of our buses, said that in his experience, typically there's one vehicle that needs some kind of service every day. And there's probably one other vehicle that is on schedule for some preventive maintenance every day. So if you have the complement of twenty-two drivers that we would hope to have, um, and you had bus runs for those folks to do, then you'd have an excess of two short buses and six propane buses above that number, right? So if two of them are kind of in a maintenance cycle, that leaves you four vehicles for sports trips and field trips that might be driven by a spare driver, um, and wouldn't be, would be happening at the same time as your regular bus runs. So the short answer is that there are days when all the buses are gone. There are days when all the buses are not gone, but I think it. But I think it does bear some more conversation when we have Sarah back in town and we can bring Ed to the table to talk about the maintenance cycle and things like that. I think that my understanding is that we don't think that the fleet is too big. We think it's sufficient for our needs. But it's certainly something that we can gather some more information about.
What, what, what's the bus number and when it's always stopped?
It's twenty-two drivers if we, if we have everybody we need, plus spare drivers. That would be twenty-two.
We don't have twenty-two full-time drivers in the budget. We only have eighteen all-time drivers in the budget.
We've budgeted for the unfilled positions though. Does it say that?
That says who's hired.
Does it say that we currently have?
Oh, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
We have twenty-two in the budget. Positions in the budget.
Yes, we have, we have optimistically budgeted over the past two years for a full complement of drivers, should we be able to hire them, so.
The lack of those drivers is a local trend, right?
It's a national trend.
Yeah. Is it, are there any indication that that's changing in the next year?
Um, no, it's kind of economy-driven in some regards, but also CDL licenses are really highly, highly, in high demand, I should say. So, I mean, you drive by pretty much anywhere and you see CDL drivers need a, um, signs right out in front of businesses and things like that, so.
We're going to keep that we have a negotiated bus contract now, for sure.
Yeah.
In terms of attracting drivers, but.
That's true. Yeah, so we have, we have nineteen plus three open positions is twenty-two.
So we, we have three budget, we have twenty-two budgeted in?
Yes. So the budget numbers that you look, look at there for salaries and benefits would include three open positions, which if it's an open position and we don't have someone in it currently for, in like this kind of a circumstance, I would typically budget at the base salary for a new driver and then an average of health benefits. And everything else is kind of optional, kind of a pile.
So this is twenty-two drivers?
Yes, the value that you see in the budget right now is only twenty-two. And I, actually, I should probably think about that when we're writing the narrative too, because we're saying we have nineteen drivers, because we do, but.
Right, well, that was.
Yeah, good point.
I got hammered at a budget outreach over it. And I don't, you know, and to look at the line item, I don't know.
You don't know what's included in there?
Right, right. And, but the narrative says that we have nineteen drivers and twenty buses.
Can I ask you that question?
Yeah, maybe too. We could send him a spreadsheet of.
We could try to ask for us.
Well, he was here last week when I asked the question, and I asked the question because he asked me about him to the point.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, the others, do you have anything else on the buses today?
I think that's everything on the buses. And the only other thing that I brought, which we never really kind of, did we spend time talking about athletic stuff besides the CIP? Was there anything left from there?
Well, there's a bunch of questions and, um.
Oh, right, yeah.
I didn't get to talk to Leon today, but Mike has, I, I asked him all the questions that you guys had last time specifically about game coverage formula, like that was my words and his. And so he said there is no formula, but we pay fifty dollars per game for coverage. There never has been a formula that he's aware of, but we've been paying that fifty-dollar amount since he, since before he was hired. So that's been sort of the amount for game coverage, and we haven't increased it for many years.
So it, whether we have five people sitting at the table taking tickets or two, those people are sharing fifty dollars or each person?
Ticket taking is different than game coverage. Game coverage is someone who's there for the whole entire game.
Okay.
You know, football games are one where we do have a lot of game coverage because the kids are all over and.
So you're talking about like supervision, right?
Right, actually covering the game. I didn't ask specifically about what the ticket takers make. Do you know that, Kate, off the top of your head?
Oh, I should, but I don't.
All right, I can ask.
So are teachers getting paid fifty dollars a football game if they come and supervise, or is that part of their contract?
Teachers don't supervise games that I'm aware of. You often see teachers there. Like Dan, for example, clearly goes to everything. He's not getting paid to do that. He does that because he wants to connect with the kids and.
I thought you said something about teachers.
Who's getting paid? They have a duty, so in the teacher contract, they have a duty that they need to fulfill in order to meet the terms of the contract.
Like a lunch duty or?
And one of the options that they can do is.
Is to go to an after-school event. They don't get paid extra for that.
No, it's, it's contractual.
Who's getting the fifty dollars?
And the supervision people are usually, some of our, they're usually hourly people, so.
They're usually connected to the schools, though they're always connected to the schools in some way. Like Kelly Johnson might do. So like Saturday, Sunday, I went to the Portland Youth ants recital they had here. And we have, in our policies, we have to have a site supervisor. We put that in place. So Dan, who's an employee of Todd's department, was there as the site supervisor. So he would get paid for supervising that event, even though that's not even a school-related event, but because they're in our schools, we want to make sure that if they need anything or anything happens. But I did ask how are, how do you determine, um, how many staff are needed and how they're compensated? So he said it's determined by him and Jordan, and it depends on the event. For example, at most games, they typ, they typically have a clock operator and announcer, a bookkeeper, media gate, player gate, crowd control staff, could be multiple people from time to time. We have other positions as well. During basketball, we use a person to do the music for the games as a boost, as boosters wanted to try to increase spectator crowds. Joe Davis and Tom Spencer are the athletic trainers, so as we talked about, that's part of their contractual obligation. But they also have student interns sometimes, so that could, you could see a lot of people and think that, like last night at the field happy game, they have six student interns that were there with Joe.
I should have broken my journal today.
Let's see. Check out the games, and I was just seeing if we had it.
So if somebody's salaried, they're not getting paid the fifty dollars, right? That's just part of their.
Right, that's, most people, like Sue goes to every single game because she wants to connect with kids and be, be visible and have a presence. I try to go to a lot of games for that same reason, but no, they're not getting any additional pay.
And then is an hourly employee getting paid pursuant to their hourly arrangement, or are they getting the fifty dollars?
They get the fifty dollars per game, per person. And sometimes it'll be a coach, like you might see Lance Johnson supervise something other than football, or another coach supervise something other than their sport. Who's able to provide coverage? Again, he said we use a wide range of people. I try to use the off-season coaches and in-house staff. We also contracted the police department from time to time. You probably see that at the football games. Team physician donates his time to remain medical partners. And then I said, is it required to have a certain amount of people? And he said, I'm not sure what you mean with that question. He feels it's a requirement to have event coverage, but if there's no like official rule. So it's more of a philosophical, and that's why I think our events are run well and our parents feel safe. I mean, football season gives us all a big worry because a lot of kids are just dropped off, even though we send letters and they don't do that. But I think it, there's a lot of false sense of security because they're inside that same area.
Comfortable, wise.
Yes, that's pretty, it's pretty wise when you get down there.
I don't, I don't.
This makes me very uncomfortable.
So. And so he just, he's not aware of any class A school that does not have game support. It's pretty standard practice. It's, he said that one school that he knows of, Thornton Academy, actually contracts all their security people with a security company for every event. And he has a person, a retired police officer, that is paid to be head of security at events. And so one of the things that has come up through our health safety, security advisory team is that during the day, we have lots of coverage, we have lots of support, but SROs, buildings are locked down. And then like three o'clock hits or two fifteen hits and.
Everything's open.
We have.
It's a free for all.
It's a free for all. And so that feels, we feel like that leaves us really vulnerable.
Yep. So Julie, those, that coverage is under line item, project services?
Yes, the supervision should be under project services.
Okay.
There's a coaching line, and sometimes there's an overlap there, coaching statements. But when you're talking about the, you know, the helper, worker fees, that's the contract service.
But the majority of that line is, is athletic?
Um.
Officials? Because those are combined.
Yes, athletic officials and also ice time and pool time are in there.
Okay.
So.
So this is that hundred and twenty-five-two number?
That's what I'm looking at, yeah. Let me move over your shoulder. Yes. Yes.
Athletic officials and services?
Yes.
I do.
And I do there. At one point I had labeled that with ice time and pool time in that line, and I don't know quite how I lost that. These accounts come out of the immune system with really generic names, and so I just rename that sometimes to make it clear what's actually in there. And I think I lost one of my clarifiers. I did bring with me these things, which are kind of fun. One of the questions we had was like where, where does our spending on athletics compare? How does it compare with other districts?
Oh, that's good.
So if you want to pass that around, I just went back to our old per-people expenditures chart, which I think you guys have seen in other contexts.
It's another one of my favorites.
Julie's favorite. So this starts in twenty-nine-ten and works its way up to twenty-eighteen, FY eighteen, which was the last year that we have data, and this data is pulled from the Department of Education. So they're the ones accumulating the data and putting them out for all to see. And because co-curricular and extracurricular, meaning athletics and activities, are their own budget category, it's one of the voter categories in the referendum, which means that we have to segregate it for the Department of Education, and we have to keep it as its own little department. And so what that means is that we can gather data for just that type of expense from the other schools as well. So if you look at the third white column that says other instruction, that's the generic label that goes over top of that budget category and like in the budget.
That's co-curriculars and extracurriculars.
Exactly.
What is other instruction?
Other instruction in this context is co-curriculars and extracurriculars. And so what I did was I pulled out the, that column, and I sorted by that column from the highest per-people expenditure to the lowest. And then for each year, did that same thing, just to see where we stand in comparison with this peer group that we've been collecting data on. And so you, you're actually going to see an interesting trajectory because Scarborough is like under the state average, towards the bottom or at the bottom for the first several years. And then it isn't until twenty sixteen-seventeen that we actually slip above the state average and start to climb a little bit. And so sixteen-seventeen and seventeen-eighteen, you see us moving up the chart in comparison with the other districts. And that speaks to, Mike has just recently said in some email that I was reading that we've been making a concerted effort to try to increase the operating budget for athletics so that we are not so dependent on booster funding. So if you think about the fact that in twenty-ten-eleven, we're at the bottom of the pile here in spending of all these districts and well below the state average, and yet we're funding probably more teams than a lot of these other districts, more of our C-level teams, more multi-level teams, and with what I guess you could call a higher success rate because we're consistently in the postseason.
And if you look at two thousand nine to two thousand ten, we were spending, the state average was three forty-four, and now the state average is three eleven. So just like to notice how that has fluctuated too, per people.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so it's like you're not just comparing apples to apples, but also that our spending doesn't go up every year. So you can see from oh-nine, from FY-ten to FY-eleven, it decreases by eighty-one dollars per student.
Right.
Can I take an actual one of those for Amy because I know she had a ton of questions on that with things?
Yeah, I'll grab one if you like. Use a couple.
So this includes, so it does athletics and, and other? So would any of these potentially be overly, like I guess, would you imagine this, them to shift if you take out the co?
Co-curriculars, which is clubs.
Yeah, and just have athletics. Do you think it would be roughly the same or any of these towns specifically high and club, clubs?
I don't have that data because it's, it's all, it's all combined when, when we're looking at the, the DOE numbers. You know, typically athletics costs more than clubs.
Yeah.
And so I, my guess would be that the proportion between co-curricular and athletics in these districts is probably fairly similar to ours, but I don't know that for a fact. You know, if they had some really super expensive, exciting club that they were funding. And it, it could be. I mean, we have Oak Hill players, and their productions can cost a lot of money, but because they make a lot of money in ticket sales, they're not relying on our budget to support that. So if, for example, Yarmouth might be, you know, their theater club might be fully supported in the budget, and they get to take the ticket, ticket sales and go out to Sapporo or something.
This is really crazy.
It's fascinating, but it is hard because it's, you're not, you're not always comparing apples to apples.
Yeah.
You know, but.
I think it's better than it was because the, the state Department of Education has done a lot of outreach to business managers to talk about what goes in what account and how is it that you report your expenditures so that we are all speaking the same language and we are all putting things in the same place. And so I'm on a list server with the business managers all over the state, and, you know, every ten minutes there's a, why, what, what do you do about this? Why am I such and such over here? No, 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 it's supposed to be over there.
Well, and although this is sorted by other instruction, you can just look at the other columns. So to the question of is our fleet the right size? Well, look at what we're spending for transportation and facilities combined comparative to other school systems. We're one, I think we're the lowest actually on that list out of all these school systems. The other question about special education, do people just come here because we have like primary crop services, right? We have amazing staff and we have really great services, but look at our spending comparatively.
If you would like, I can share this with you as an Excel document.
Oh, wait, Kate, my favorite column, system admin. Just take a look at that one for FY-eighteen. So this idea that we have, we're job-heavy, it's like system administration.
One of those is floor.
Yeah, the lowest by far. But this is, this is the narrative that we've tried to share in a variety of ways, and it just never seems to stick, is that you get a good value, you get a great return on your investment here in Scarborough when it comes to your public education. I mean, overall per people cost, we're fifth from the bottom, I think. So there's only four districts spending less than us. One's the state average.
We're actually right in the middle.
Well, that's not sorted by, you gotta actually count them up dollar value-wise because it's only sorted by the other instruction column.
That's why I want to share with you as an Excel, so you can play around with it if you want to.
Could be a good thing.
You think that I can use Excel?
Sure, you just click on the little arrow.
I know, in theory. And then Mom's like, okay.
I can sort it for you any day.
Thank you for pointing that out because it's like, oh, we're in the middle.
Uh, the other thing that we did in that same, in that same worksheet is to try and do a little analysis year by year. You can't read that, come on.
Same.
It's year by year with types of expenditure. So we pulled out direct student instruction, and we went year over year.
Right.
And then we did student staff support year over year, and then, you know, so taking the sort of categories of spending and doing a year over year.
I like that.
Yeah, I think we, we can also share that with the full board. It was, that's helpful just for everything that we're doing.
I think it should go on the other budget materials too.
I have a version of it that's this, which I sorted by athletics because that's what we wanted to talk about, but I could just put the actual spreadsheet and say, hey, look at all this stuff. But I feel like I might not be providing enough context, just no way.
I mean, if we just throw it in the drive, and then we can talk about them, let them know that it's there.
Okay.
What do you think about putting it on the budget photo?
I think the more information, better.
And I don't, I don't think it needs a lot of context.
Yeah, yeah, really don't. Yeah, yeah, for example, I think, but not this one sorted by athletics.
No, I'm gonna go back to the original one and.
Right, right.
I like the one by voter category with the years across because then you can see spending trends.
That's a tab on the same spreadsheet. Um, and I think that they're sorted, this one is sorted by twenty-seventeen-eighteen figures, the ones by expense type, and then this one is by total cost for years, total per pupil costs. And then it's by year, so let me get this up into the drive here.
I mean, I would think sorting it by the total per pupil costs.
Okay, so.
Okay, so guys, I had this booked until six-thirty.
We're, I'm, it's six-twenty, great.
I'm gonna go right up to the public hearing, but I just want to be respectful a little, lots of time. You guys all planning to stay?
Do we need food?
No, I'm staying forever.
We're gonna have pillows off the. The hand of her rice man.
It's either lollipops or rice.
Yeah.
Lollipops or rice.
That's what she had in that container, I thought she was gonna start eating like lonely and eating.
I think, Julie, the only other thing, at least from my notes that we had a question on was just the impact fees. From my research, it cannot, it has to be used in capital improvement, not operational, but I just don't know how much was left.
Yes, that is true. Um, that, that is absolutely true. It has to be CIP, it has to be bricks and mortar. It can't just be like, you know, we're gonna buy tech equipment, and so we're gonna use it.
So I didn't read bricks and mortar, it just said capital improvement projects, but does that imply bricks and mortar?
My, the part that we actually put in our slide deck, I think, says specifically like structure, doesn't it?
Well, what about the boiler was one of the?
So what I, I emailed Tom Hall about it, um, yesterday. Let's, I haven't gotten a reply back yet from him.
So I can, I have it up right now, that says exclusively for capital improvements. It shall not be used for operational, but it does not say.
Bricks and mortar.
Bricks and mortar.
Okay, is that the part that references the two thousand one?
I mean, this entire thing is out of date, and it also says the school impact fees, yeah, can only be used.
Through two thousand twelve.
For the things that were in the strategic plan.
Right.
So we're already by.
No, no, we're not, because this was in there then.
Okay.
It's another new story. Um, I actually reviewed the plan.
Okay.
So it was, it was to eliminate modulators, actually, is what it was trying to do, both in two thousand one and two thousand eighteen. Um, but I thought that paragraph, do you have the whole thing? Okay, but either way, we can get clarification on that. Um, so I did ask how much of the fees, how, is there any excess school impact fees in the fund? Was any of it, uh, additional fees applied to debt service this year? If not, is that money still available? Do you have, we're still waiting for it to.
So.
And I think that'll be a great conversation piece along with the debt service, um, increases for Monday.
What's the difference between last time and this time for the CIP?
Um, the buses are different, and let's see, I added a little section down at the bottom about revenue because, um, I wanted to, you know, last time I had highlighted that school capital non-tax revenues because it was the, um, adjustment between what was bonded and what wasn't, uh, what was appropriated.
I think I misspoke, the, uh, so last time we had total CIP adjustments, ninety-eight thousand, and now we have total CIP expenditure adjustments, one twenty-eight.
Right, because I separated out the revenue, because we had the reduction of, um, forty-five thousand
Okay.
as part of the, uh, as part of the top total. And then I felt like that was a little confusing because we've got one section where we're changing the budget, our expenditures, and then another section where the revenue was impacted.
Okay.
And then down at the bottom, I also added a little box on tonight's version that sort of summarizes that again. That's like, you know, here's what we're doing to our expenditure budget, and then we've got this revenue thing. So here's the net, uh, the change to the net budget, which is the tax request on the school side. Does that make sense?
H- no, how come the revenue adjustment is not in parentheses down below what it is up top? That's a silly question.
Um, because, well, yeah, it's, sorry, it's a, it's a, what we should do is we should change it so that the sum, it's minus forty-five thousand appropriated.
For the trucks, right?
Yeah, and what I've got is I've got plus forty-five thousand bonded, so minus forty-five thousand dollars appropriated, plus.
So it's just the opposite.
So the forty-five, the forty-five should be in front of these, is the seventy-five.
And the seventy-five should not, and then the thirty becomes a positive amount.
Yeah.
The bottom's right now.
The bottom's right.
The bottom's right, okay. Or it will be when I put another.
This is how I can tell I'm tired, when my brain flares moving down.
So, Kate, if we reduced the overall education budget, operating budget, right, by a hundred and eighteen?
Yes.
Five-six-nine, and we increased CIP revenue by thirty.
We actually decreased CIP revenue by thirty because we took out seventy-five thousand dollars for buses that we don't need. We added, and this is where the minus signs are weird, it's like.
Record CIP revenue.
Because CIP revenue is non-tax revenue used for CIP. So it's bonding, financing, right? So we have, uh, actually, I think it needs to be a little more around.
Yeah, I think you added forty-five to non-tax revenue bonded.
Right.
Less the seventy-five, so it is.
Right, so in, in CIP non-tax revenue, we increased our bonding by forty-five thousand, but then we decreased our bonding by seventy-five thousand. So that means a net decrease in school capital non-tax revenues, which is that highlighted yellow thing.
Right, so that means we should have it at the bottom, it should be in parentheses.
Cause you. Can you record this?
Is this a reduction or an addition?
We're getting the, we're getting forty-five, we're, we're losing a forty-five thousand dollar spending cost for the, for the truck.
It's, it's apples and oranges though here.
No, it's part of the.
There's apples and oranges here, Julie. I think the problem is that what, what we're doing at the bottom is we're saying, what is, what impact are we gonna have on the tax request? Okay, so if we're making a reduction to our operating budget, but we're also decreasing our non-tax revenues, then the decrease to the tax request is that lower amount. Now? The impact on the net budget, if you look at the difference between the education net budget at the top of the page, top of page one, and the education net budget, which is our tax ask, at the bottom of page two, it's a reduction in our tax ask, our tax request of eighty-eight thousand five hundred sixty-nine.
Yeah.
And it would have been a reduction of a hundred and eighteen thousand had we not made those adjustments in CIP revenue.
Yeah, so I just think it, it's parentheses. The way you had it at the top in the blue and then parentheses below, gets us to that.
Clear, okay. So Kate, the difference between what's on this page and this bottom is you're saying this is.
It's the same thing.
It's just less whatever, everything that we had here, right? Or is this just the tax ask and this is not, and this is the complete budget?
So the education gross budget is reduced by everything that we've changed in the budget, which is the expenditure change, which is a hundred and eighteen-five-sixty-nine. That is in the middle of page two. So if you go from education gross budget, the total budget expenditures, fifty-six thousand, and then you take out one eighteen-five-sixty-nine, you get fifty-six-oh-one-eight on page two. That's for your education gross budget. But because we've also made an adjustment to the school capital, capital non-tax revenues, we're financing less money, which means that we don't get to reap the reward of the whole hundred and eighteen-five-sixty-nine and reduce our tax ask.
Wait, can you repeat that last part again?
Um, so we're reducing our operating budget, the over, well, I shouldn't say operating, our total education budget by the hundred and eighteen-five-sixty-nine.
Right.
But we're also reducing the non-tax revenue for the buses, because we don't need that seventy-five thousand dollars.
Right.
We're throwing the truck into CIP, into bonding, and we're taking out the buses, which is a net increase. Sorry.
Net decrease.
I almost had it. A net decrease in the non-tax revenues.
So those are both net decreases, right?
Um, yes, it's a decrease to the spending, but because it's a decrease to non-tax revenues, then it in, it, it isn't as big an increase to your, it isn't as big a decrease to your tax costs.
Which part? The, the truck?
The bottom line, the education net budget is smaller than the original, but not by the full amount of the reduction in the operating costs.
Because we had scheduled before to bond seventy-five thousand, but now we're only gonna bond forty-five thousand, right? So now that means that in the revenue part, because you know how you have gross, then revenue, gross plus revenue.
Equals net?
Right? Um, but now we're, we've reduced that, that revenue piece because we're not gonna bond that thirty thousand dollars, so that's why the net is lower.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
So you had, yeah, I like that.
Yeah.
My name is the puppet, and that's the way we're version.
So that's really confusing and complex to think about, but.
So where are we at now for our overall change from first reading?
The overall change, just based on what's here, between first reading and second reading, is a reduction in the net budget, meaning the money we're asking for in taxes of eighty-eight thousand five hundred sixty-nine dollars.
Not quite one point three.
Not quite one point three million. Um, but then again, I don't think we were really looking for one point three million in our screen.
I made that clear. Um, and with a few items still in motion, see the bottom part here. These are some of the kind of low-hanging school board decision points. Of course, the, on the bottom part, and that's, um, my little arrow is the clerical, the compliance clerk, if you do decide to reduce that. Um, and these are like, I would say like the low-hanging fruit decision points you still have to make. Um, and then there's of course the whole.
I still wanna talk about. So the only, um, increases since first reading would be the main care?
Mm-hmm.
Um, the strategic planning, which we'll talk about.
Today I may not need that, yeah.
And that's.
Um, while we have six hundred and twenty-six dollars for unified basketball, and we have, um, forty-one-two-seventy-two for debt service, which is expected to go down.
Okay.
Um, so.
It'll go way down.
Well, yeah, and seventy thousand would be nice, because that's what I thought you had.
I don't know why it would be so dramatically different, it's not like we've had massive capital projects.
It all depends on the bond market, you know, what your interest rates are gonna be like.
So is I see our role going into Monday, um, is to basically share and update your version of this because, and also with, because it's a full board decision, and we're the only ones that would have had this depth of knowledge at this point. So we're not only communicating to town council, but we're also communicating to our board.
Yeah.
And then go, come with recommendations to our full board so we can say, there's another adjustments we want to make to this. And then give them the opportunity to say, no, I don't like that, maybe we should have the inclusion specialists, no, and then, and then we re, rework it from there.
So my, my ask is for the inclusion specials to be included in the budget? I mean, how, how do we handle that as a finance committee in terms of presenting that? Do we have to be in agreement, uh, um, in the finance committee?
You are making a recommendation ultimately to the full board on the sixteenth. So no actions, it wouldn't actually, I don't think be appropriate for you to be taking like micro actions leading up to that. You've been tasked with providing the board with a recommendation. The tricky part is that, um, and then tomorrow, I think you, do you have committee updates tomorrow?
We do.
So you can talk about like some of these items that are in motion, you can talk about, you know, how you're feeling about that position. Um, then you have the whole workshop together on Monday, no decisions are being made there either. Once we know what our bottom line, what the finance committee is gonna recommend to council, we still won't know if that's really, if full council's gonna support that, but then we'll have much more direction to come back and say like, okay, you know, what's in, what's out.
And that's really Wednesday now, is what, when the finance committee is going to say, this is what we're gonna recommend.
Right.
But then that, they then have to recommend that.
To the council.
And the council doesn't have to agree with them.
That's still fifteen.
Right, so Kate, Kate and I probably need to clear our day on the sixteenth to react to whatever might happen at council, because we won't know that.
Already cleared.
And so.
And the seventeenth, I'm leaving town, just putting it out. Yeah, you wanna come? It's graduation.
Yeah, does that make sense?
Yeah, makes sense, I'm just. And I wasn't, just, just because we make decisions at the workshop, but I do think like it's our responsibility to go and do the recommendation so that the board can then take that away, and then on the sixteenth.
And be pondering it, you know.
Yeah, come back and say definitively.
Mm-hmm.
So Tom handed out a worksheet, and I thought I had a copy of it, and I couldn't find it before I came. At their town council meeting, or their workshop, saying that he was able to reduce the town side of the CIP by seven hundred and forty-four thousand dollars was like their, their ultimate, what he felt comfortable making his recommendation to the council.
That wasn't reductions necessarily.
No, it was real, yeah, it was shifting to bonding, it was, it was doing all kinds of. The task ask was, was reduced, was that a seven hundred thousand or something? Seven hundred and forty-four.
And that's only based on CIP reallocation?
There was a couple of other.
Some CIP reductions, so like the one hundred and seventy-one-five, that was for the revolving renovation account, I think. Um, that was totally deferred, so some things were deferred.
They, they were gonna set up an account to start putting money away for.
Yeah, I mean, I watched the meeting, but.
Fire trucks and things like that, and they, they've reduced, you know, he said one of the things that the council could do is decide to reduce the amount that was going into that account.
But that's seven hundred thousand dollar figure is all CIP, is my question. So he hasn't made any recommendations for reallocation in the operating budget, yeah?
No, that I'm with you.
No.
That would be what Monday's for. So I'm just nervous that we're coming in at eighty-eight and Tom's coming in at seven hundred.
Well, to be fair, part of that is ours.
Well, right, well, it is our truck. It is our truck. So, so it's not, I'm not saying like, like comparing what he's coming in at, what, what we're coming in at. I guess the bottom line is we're still not even close to one point three.
Well, it's not the fifteen, you know.
Um, yeah.
I mean, what are we gonna do?
Well, the question is, are we saying, yeah, we're gonna hit one point three? Or are we saying, y'all task us with explaining to you why it's more than that, and here you go.
I think it's, I think it's both.
It's a combination, right?
Yeah, I think it's a combination. I don't wanna come across as though we are, um, being.
Blowing anybody off?
Yeah, as, as though we're being, you know, rigid or, or uncompromising. Because one point three million dollars to get us down to a three percent mill rate was what the town council set the goal, and we did tentatively agree to that, and then with the caveat that it could be more. I think the pulse of the town council is that they are looking for it to be slightly more than three percent. But I think they wanna see collaboration and cooperation from the board too. Like I think it's important that we are their partners, and this is like a delicate.
Well, I mean, we did have what, have, what for increases?
Yeah, that's sixty thousand dollars.
That's, right. Seventy.
Well, there's a hundred thousand dollars of unexpected increases.
Right, I mean, whoa.
Yeah, um, and, and I would just say from a process standpoint, like, and Kate obviously's been doing this a lot under me, it's not like you all just said, yes, we accept it. I mean, you've asked really tough questions, you've put our feet to the fire and made us really go back and refine and rethink and, you know, are we really, do we really understand this proposal? Are we being? made us really go back and refine and rethink, and, you know, are we really, do we really understand this proposal, are we being good fiscal agents? So, I mean, just for you all, I think, especially your first year of the budget.
Well, I think maybe we need to ask them to watch our, our finance committee meetings, so that they can understand that.
Yeah.
They're all publicly, they're all.
Wait, as a, as the chair, would you be willing to email them and to make that request?
Yes. Yeah.
Because, I mean, in order for them to understand that, they would really need to, to see that the work that's been done. And, and I worry that they're just gonna be given an overview and not fully understand that, and, and, nor should they, if they don't have that background, but I think that that's important.
Yeah, that, that was why I really wanted to share all of the links in one stop for the work that led up to first reading, cause I know it's hard sometimes to like, pull it all together. And so really just the last two finance committee meetings have been recorded, right?
Can we work on a, um, an email, a joint email, that would explain some of the unexpected costs?
Yeah.
I think that could be part of our presentation on Monday, but yeah, but yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But I, but I, um, wonder if maybe it would be processed better in advance, and along with that, ask for them, you know, provide them with the, um,
You know, they're.
information that our, um, meetings have been taped, and that it would be helpful for, for them for background to have that information.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
I think, um. Just think me odd here guys, these aren't fully formed thoughts, but if we look at the increase since last week, which is about, which is over a hundred thousand dollars, I guess I'm just wondering, that, you know, would be t- almost close to two hundred thousand dollars, which combined with their seven hundred thousand dollars is almost a million, which really isn't that bad, and so
We know. Right. I know, put them a lot. Right.
I'm wondering if we should be prepared to go through the budget and see if there's anywhere we can make up that a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, and.
That, in a place that doesn't impact the classrooms, Julie.
Right.
I would focus definitely on the sixty, because I think the forty-one is probably gonna change, and maybe we can, we'll know more about that.
Still fresh.
The debt service, forty-one.
I think certainly by Monday, the debt service, but the sixty, yeah.
This is easy for me to say, um, without Allison's he- here to defend her proposal, but the, um, compliance clerk, if you went to point six, that eighteen, that's eighteen thousand, right there, so then it's still that, getting it started, getting.
Yeah.
I, I don't know, I, I, I go towards the, the sound system and scorecards is where, where I go.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, of course, too. That's good to hear.
I mean, if we use not impacting the classrooms as our guiding principle.
Yeah. It'll, it'll start right near the top to postpone.
But I really wanna discuss the, the inclusion specialist, I really feel strongly for that and wanna advocate for them, um, and.
So those reductions wouldn't even cover adding an inclusion specialist?
Right.
Right, and I'm just looking, Alyssa's trying to be.
Cause that's seventy thousand. Um. If you did those two things.
Realistic, I think if we're gonna talk about the inclusion specialist, we have to go back to this list of investments, because I don't think we're gonna find an inclusion specialist in the operating budget by making reductions of, you know, five hundred thousand dollars here and there. So I think then we're looking at our new investments and looking at our priorities, our priorities here, if you can find it in the, it's a.
Mm-hmm.
You're gonna have.
Yes.
Yep.
That's it.
Yeah, I just worry that you want to.
But again.
And.
Well, so I guess, so to make my point a little more clear.
Shh. Yeah.
This still has a red line somewhere.
Mm-hmm.
And so, depending on what the ultimate bottom line that the town council decides on, some of this stuff, I, I just have a feeling it's gonna be below the red line in terms of, you know, our net budget. And so if the HR specialist, you know, falls below the red line, or the STEM teacher falls below the red line, you know, I'm gonna advocate for the STEM teacher over the inclusion.
Well, me too, but, but I think that, um, you know, as much as I've disagreed with sort of how this has gone, I, I also think that the town council includes individuals who may really understand the value of some of those requests. I mean, I, I think that there are many people in that council that will agree that, um, a STEM teacher is necessary, a HR specialist is necessary, and I think that they will see the value in an inclusion specialist, and so, you know, I, I don't wanna limit our options on that.
I, I agree, and I don't wanna, I don't.
And, and I don't wanna under, undersell them either, in their ability to recognize the, the value of those things, and so, you know, I'm not,
Value, yeah.
That's why I think that an email in advance might be, it might be helpful to explain sort of some of these, these things of where we're coming out and why.
Yeah.
Well, and I, I think up to, and to our board too.
Yeah.
Cause in a three minute update tomorrow night, I'm not gonna be able to tell you the full story.
Right, no.
And I'm the last one to go, anyways, we're all ready.
Ready, yeah.
Are you done yet?
Okay, so, just to kind of put some numbers to some of this, the adulting course that we wanted to run one section of, sixty-six students have already signed up.
Wow, so.
Um, the intro to engineering, a hundred and eleven, the intro to business, a hundred and twenty-two, the intro to computer science and cooling, ninety-two.
So how many of those, the intro to business, where does that fall under?
All of these would go under set STEM position, uh, because it gets teachers who are teaching those other courses, make them more available to use these. Um, so it's, and music productions, which is a course we ran through, um, the program of studies, just to see if there would be interest to run it, is, there's twenty-one kids already signed up for it. Um, so, but we're looking to fund the startup cost of that through a SEP grant and or some other creative funding sources, cause it costs six to four hundred dollars just for them. So that's something that's not in the budget, but might be a good talking point, is something for people to come out and vote for.
Um, I have a totally, like, out of left field question, which is something that I was thinking about when we were listening to the food service presentation the other night. So, and I'm piecing together like, six different meetings, so if I'm like, completely wrong, if you can just say no, like, no. Um, we, we have an account that we are able to transfer money to our nutrition program to offset the costs. That we use to offset the costs, and we transfer money into that account, and it showed up on the audit.
At the end of the year.
At the year of the year.
It's fund balance that we use.
So we have, so do we, all right, now I'm gonna ask a really.
Can we use it upfront?
Nope, that was my question, do we u- do we have a budgeted amount that we put into fund balance every year?
No, not into fund balance, fund balance is, um, technically what's left over when you, when you finished your year.
Okay. Okay.
So.
Right, like we budgeted twenty for strategic planning, but you only needed ten, okay.
Right, so fund balance is made up of all the incremental savings that you might have in six hundred different GL accounts, and it's just a rolling total.
Okay. When we do our budgeting, do we take into account what's in the fund balance account to cover certain accounts that we know we're gonna have?
It's your bottom line and the year. Um, what we do, what we do with fund balance is, um, when we build a budget, we use a portion of what's left from the prior year, the audited year and fund balance, as revenue in the next year.
Okay.
And we kinda have to do that, that's that statute that says you can't hold on to more than three percent of your budget.
Right.
So if you look at the, at your budget book and you look at the, um, revenues page, you'll see that included in our non-tax revenues is
Three.
three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of fund balance, which is what was left in the bank at the end of FY eighteen.
Yeah. Okay.
And last year, we went to a lot of extra effort to try and build that up higher, so that we could use five hundred thousand dollars as revenue in FY nineteen, um.
Cause we knew we had a two point one.
Because we were filling our gap, so
Yeah. Create.
it's possible if you have, you know, curtailment or a strategic plan, to make your fund balance a little bit higher in a given year.
Okay.
Um, and then, but then you would turn around and apply it as revenue.
So do we, so, okay, so that does kind of go back to, do we use it in advance, so if the answer is no.
Can we use it before we know we have it? Um, if I said to you, oh, let's make our non-tax revenues, let's increase that fund balance amount from three hundred and fifty thousand to four hundred and fifty thousand, well, chances are we will generate a hundred thousand dollars worth of fund balance in this current year, because we typically do, but it's not a guarantee, it's not in the bank yet. It's kinda like when they were talking about the impact fees, and they said, well, we use what we have from two years ago, because we closed the books, we've audited, we know we have the money, and then we use it in the next year, so there's like a two-year gap. So what I'm saying is what we have at the end of FY eighteen, I'm using all of that in FY twenty.
Right. Right.
I could say, yeah, by the end of FY nineteen, that'll be a little bit bigger number, but I don't know that for a fact yet, I don't know how much. I mean, history will tell me that, yes, I will have more than that.
A hundred thousand dollars would be safe.
Do we anticipate having more because of withdrawing from the nutrition program?
Yeah.
No, cause we haven't done it yet.
No, 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 so, so just speaking more broadly.
That would be, that would be fund balance generated in next year's budget, right? So, or it would be the fund balance generated in next year's budget that we didn't need to use for.
Offsetting of that, right. If food sales really go up, just wanna do like a big school lunch marketing program, breakfast lunch, um, why eat anywhere else kind of program? And we don't have to, um, supplement that program, like, right?
Then we have that fund balance available.
In this budget, there's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the operating, in the nutrition budget, then we.
For FY twenty there, I put two hundred thousand.
Right, so then, then in FY twenty-one, you have.
Wild.
FY twenty-one, okay.
Yeah, that's.
Right, and you'd have it available.
But that's the goal, we're trying to fill that, yeah, right.
That's the goal.
Okay.
Is, is there any way, I know that there's so many variables, but is there any way to get projections for here, um, if this is successful and if it runs for the course of the school year next year, what we would anticipate in terms of impact?
He can share with us, Kate, um, Kate.
People will keep it.
Case numbers, but.
Yeah, we're not sure how transparent.
I mean, you could probably look at a percent increase in sales and then apply the percent increase to ours, it's exciting to think about, if they're, they're successful.
Well, and it wouldn't be irresponsible to say that we're gonna increase our non-tax revenues from fund balance in FY twenty by some small amount, knowing that we will generate that small amount in FY nineteen, that's not irresponsible, and it probably is a question that will be asked of us.
Okay. That's a question. Thank you for, um, getting all of the.
Answers to Chatter question, and all of that work, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
So we just need to connect, to figure out who we're presenting on.
Strategy.
Okay, yeah. So, over the weekend, between now and, I keep thinking it's Thursday, but between now and Monday, there, there's still a couple of things that are in motion, so like, the school board, the strategic planning.
Debt service.
Debt service, so if we can at least have those ironed out by Monday, then it makes the conversation a little less nebulous.
Do you think it's an effective strategy to see where Tom is, um, see then if we were to get to that amended amount, what that impact would be for us, and do you wanna speak to that, or not?
I.
And you can think about that.
Yeah.
I, I just think there could be a way to say like, we heard you, and this is what it would mean if we were to do that.
I really don't like that, that goes to April's point.
Well, and this is why I don't agree with the three percent from first reading, cause it's the same sort of.
Yeah. Right, no.
I think you can do half, right, I think we always leave, we heard you.
Right.
Right.
But. I, I want, I really wanna go downstairs, so I'm gonna excuse myself.
We're doing this reality.
Okay, so. Can I ask a clarifying question about that?
Yeah.
Is this a public comment? We have public comment on the agenda.
Yes.
Um, so, I heard them say, we want the one point three reduction, however, we understand that the school might not have much wiggle room. I heard a couple of comments that say that. And I, I just don't want us to lose sight of that as we try to do our diligence throughout this process. I mean, I think you guys have been so transparent, and I think have asked more questions than I have ever seen a finance committee ask in the, in the recent future, in recent past. You guys really ask hard thoughtful questions.
Well, they, they.
So I, I just, I just.
I agree with you, you gave me a hundred and ten percent, because I really do feel like the temperature of the town council is very warm and fuzzy towards the school's budget. I just, we've gotta figure out where that line is, and it's the community too, right? It's taking everybody's temperature all the time, just to not go in like, this is our budget, and if we cut this, this, and this, then teachers are gonna be out on the streets, and there are gonna be crying children, and finding a, you know, a happy medium.
I feel like we need more time.
All right, we always do.
Yeah.
Yeah, says the woman who has her coat on at this, end of meeting, adjourned, adjourned, thank you.
Yeah.
Straight, super straight.
Thank you.
Thank you.